All right, welcome everyone. Sorry for the holdup. We had to, the storm blew in some branches and apparently stopped traffic. So thanks John Paul for getting here. So our Board of Education meeting is called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome everyone. Glad you're here tonight. So in the absence of Secretary Jocelyn, Member Donahue will act as secretary and Member Petrusia will serve as acting treasurer this evening. So colleagues, unless there are objections, tonight's agenda will be approved as printed? Very good. Okay, we are now going to move on to public comments on action items. So those are items that we will be voting on this evening. I know I have some green cards here. Let me take a look. These are all non-action items. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board this evening on action items? That is items that we'll be voting on as presented in the agenda. Okay, very good. Thank you, colleagues. Moving on now to our consent agenda. Unless there are objections, tonight's consent agenda is approved as presented. Excellent, very good. All right, we are now going to move on to information items. We're going to welcome up Assistant Superintendent Elka for all the conversations about our Children's Village Agreement.
Thank you very much. I am joined up here by Nadine Mila Stan, who is the Director of Student Support Services and is part of the educational services that we provide at Children's Village. So we talked about this a little bit at the last board meeting, but just to reiterate, Children's Village is an adjudicated youth facility. The students that are in there are placed there by the court. Oakland County oversees the facility and is contracted with the Waterford School District for the educational services for those students there. The reason we are the ones who are providing those educational services is because they are within our district boundary. So when they are placed there by the court, they actually become our students in RFT. So the agreement that was given to you has gone through the, our attorney and the county's attorney. We made mostly minor changes, some basic updates to language and things like that, but basically have the same agreement that we've always had in place. It is a five-year agreement. We have one small change from the info item that is reflected in the agreement that was sent to you yesterday is just the date. Instead of August 16th through August 15th, it's now August 21st through August 20th. It's a minor change and it still reflects basically the fiscal year activity that we have over there. So it allows us to do summer school in the same fiscal year. And just to reiterate too, the funding for this is, there are two sources, primarily Section 24, which is again from the state, and that is based on the FTE for the students and our expenditures. And then we have federal Title I Part D that's also, also for this. Both of those are for adjudicated youth programs. So those are the only programs where these funds are for. Anything that's not covered by those two sources or from the per pupil amount that we get for those students there is covered by the county. So there's only a few things that are covered by the county, but they are considered unallowable costs by the state. So one of those things is summer school. We like to have summer school for those students. That is not covered by the state, so the county covers that. And then the other things are indirect costs, which is a normal thing with grants. It allows us to cover our other expenses such as payroll, accounting oversight, such as Ms. Mila Stan. And then the last thing was is the state is very specific that we can have not more than 1.5 FTE and secretaries in that program. We choose to have slightly more. The county has agreed to pay for anything over 1.5. Currently we have two, but we have one, we may have up to three depending on how many students we have in the program. Are there any questions?
Colleagues, comments or questions? Member Torres?
I think if I remember correctly, when this was brought before us, the main holdup was that the change in the county administration, right, and that there was new people, so they just really needed to look at the contract better.
Correct. I think the contract itself was not the issue. I think it was understanding the funding sources and how we determine our staffing and things like that. They wanted to make sure that they understood how we were coming up with it. And Ms. Mila Stan did talk to them about how the staffing is. We do it the same staffing with, that we do with our other students. We only put in what we actually need to meet all the educational needs. We're not padding the staffing there or anything like that. So I think once we worked through that, we explained how the funding was, that we apply for any funding that's available for those students. They got more comfortable, then they were able to explain it to the Board of Commissioners. They were more comfortable. So the agreement itself, like I said, very minor changes, but I think it was really just getting everybody that was new over at the county up to speed with how the whole funding of the program works.
Thank you.
Any questions? Into local agreement?
Okay, thank you very much. You're released.
We're going to keep Assistant Superintendent Elka up there. We're going to talk about our Stepansky playground equipment.
I asked Carla Ramirez, she is with Bart Mallow, to assist me for any questions I might not know. We are going to talk about the purchase of the early childhood center playground equipment and the installation together because it is really connected and a lot of supporting document is for both. So basically, as we're starting to get near the end of the build for Stepansky's new building, we are now looking at the playground. So Andrea Bratton, who's the principal at Stepansky and her team, worked with a playground designer and our architect to come up with a plan that works with the area that we have behind the building and addresses the learning and playing needs of the students. So the biggest amount of equipment that we chose was from Game Time. So you'll see the quote there. In addition to the quote, you'll have a cross-reference from the quote to the site plan. And we have four areas that we consider as for the playground and this shows each of them. In addition, because of the timing of some of the installation, the lead time for the equipment, the install is going to be done in the fall and the spring. So in the fall, we are going to do the equipment that is in what we call the mulch areas. That is the northeast and the northwest corridor of the site plan, the one that's closest to Airport Road and the one that's right behind the courtyard. So those are the two that we'll be able to do in fall. And then the other, the other half of the one behind the courtyard is Pour and Play. And then there's another Pour and Play that's by the early childhood wing that's closest to the bus loop. Those need to be done during a certain, they have to be over 40 degrees ambient temperature for that to set. So we do not know if we can meet that timeline, which would be like about October 1st for the fall, with the equipment lead time. So right now, we're setting up, allowing ourselves room in our schedule so that we go ahead and do that in spring. So it could be that we get the equipment faster than we thought and the temperature stays warm, we could get it all done in fall. But we will have it ready for spring. So in the spring, when we actually have the building start to be used after spring break, we will have those two mulch areas that are in the northeast and northwest side and we'll have the courtyard will be all sotted. So by springtime, they will have a beautiful play area. And I did confirm with Andrea Bratton that that was acceptable for what they need for the few months they would have in the building for that. The current playground, just to clarify, is not, it's going to be where the parking lot will be for the new building. So obviously, we would have to move it anyways. And a lot of that equipment is very old. We decided not to keep any of it. So hopefully, with the Q and As I also gave, there was a lot of extra detail about why we were doing the split and what was going on. So hopefully, they answered a lot of the questions that you may have. Doing the purchase directly helps us control the timeline and also gives us a little bit better deal on the equipment.
Colleagues, comments or questions regarding Stepansky Playground? Member Donahue?
Similar to how it's currently set up at Stepansky, will there be fencing around that whole area from side to side to protect that off? So it's just for the Stepansky students?
So what we do with the fencing is, we will have it around the entire playground area, except when you get to the northeast corridor, we're actually splitting that play area because the idea is we're allowing the stuff that's outside the fence to be community accessible. Anything inside the fence would not be community accessible. It would just be for the Stepansky students. So that allowed us to do both, be able to offer some new and inventive playground equipment in area for community, but also keep the majority of it safe for our students and to keep our students safe while they're out on the playground. Because that's incredibly important, of course.
Is there a bigger drawing of it over at the offices?
If you, the one that you got, you should be able to blow up and take a look at. That's what I had to do. I can always print it on 11 by 17, but I guarantee you, it still will not be as big as you would like it to be.
I wasn't sure if they had a bigger piece of paper over at your offices that I could actually kind of see. Because again, we may be going for a tour through there coming up.
Yes, we plan to show you those areas when you do come out on August 3rd.
That's what I'm looking for, just so I get a feel for it. Because again, looking at this, it looks like it's over here in the corner where the pile of dirt is right now. So yeah, I was, big pile of dirt is the topsoil and somewhere else. I don't know what we're doing because you guys are taking care of it.
So we'll go ahead and get you as big as we can get.
Whatever they have over there. And again, once I get a feel for it, they get, you know, better reading glasses, I should be able to see some of this. You know, that's all I'm looking for. I don't need the chalkboard site, but it would be.
Put it on a billboard.
We'll just see how big we can get it, if we can get it into one of the normal large sizes that'll allow you to see everything.
Just an ideal feel for where the different things are. Not that it matters because it looks like it's going to be smaller than my size, so it's my way of saying.
This, yes, this is made for our early childhood students, not our adult students.
I'm drifting back though. Do that, it won't be long.
And our goal is when you visit us on August 3rd at Stepansky, we want to show you the area so you can kind of visualize.
And that's all kind of, again, it isn't just this map here because of the map.
Right. That's our intention too, so you could see that.
Okay, thank you.
Member Torres?
So this is specific to the equipment, correct? And then the installation is separate?
Correct, correct.
And yeah, I appreciate all of the information that you gave us and just seeing the cost of all the different items and things. It's very helpful to understand. Makes you have more of an appreciation for all of that equipment. So, and you mentioned the old equipment, so are we, what are we going to do with it? Are we going to, can we donate it or anything?
We will probably scrap it because a lot of that equipment really, we have it inspected every year and it's a good chance that we wouldn't pass the inspection. So it's probably safer to just go ahead and scrap it. Though I believe there are probably going to take a look at it and see if there's something that we could donate or use elsewhere. They'll just double check. But a lot of times when you start moving the playground equipment, even as far as behind the new building, it's not good to use anymore unfortunately.
Okay. In Stepansky now, there's the sort of cement path around that.
Yes.
And that, I think, is not just there for fun, but for also accessibility and making sure that some of our students.
Yes.
So will we have a similar sort of pathway to some of these playgrounds?
Yes, yes. That accessibility for all of our students was very important in everything that we were doing. So that's why the mulch we're picking is able, they're able to do that instead of the pea gravel, the pour and place that we're going to have at, I'm sure you're familiar with the pour and place at some of our buildings that we have. So that's going to be what we have by the early childhood, or excuse me, the ECSC students. So that is perfect for them. They'll have no issue with having to do with gravel or mulch or anything. They'll be able to get out there and use that, those equipment.
Just for those following along at home, here's a list of some of the cool things that seem to be coming along with this bid. We've got bongos, a leaf seat, bee on flower, small mushroom tree stump, log balance beam, sensory rings, cattail spinner. Seems, seems pretty cool.
The architects spent a lot of time designing that.
Yes, and the first plan is, first plans tend to be, was very extravagant. So Andrea Bratton worked really hard with her team to get it down to very, even though 300,000 is a lot of money, it was very, very refined from what we started with and really took a lot of time to figure out what kind of balanced things, what kind of fun things. A lot of the stuff that we have are things that we don't necessarily have at other playgrounds right now because they're just new things that came around that we found, they have found through research are helpful for our students.
Certainly has to match the sort of, the lore and mythology of that Stepansky playground right now, so really exciting. Colleagues, any other comments or questions here? Okay. Excellent. Take your car off.
You get to stay for the next one.
Okay, we're going to keep you up here now. Stepansky Playground Equipment Installation.
Well, we did talk about both of them, so it's really, there's nothing more to add. Just the fact that we are doing that split installation, it is only for the equipment. The rest of the stuff was already bid out, so this is just truly the equipment and this is what they do. So, so we'll have that for the next board meeting with the numbers.
Colleagues, comments or questions regarding installation? I just want to commend Assistant Superintendent Elka, you and the team's sort of careful attention to the timeline, the information you provided ahead of the meeting and in the packet. Really exciting stuff, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I don't think, Carla, you're sticking around for warehouse bulk storage. You are? Jack of all trades.
I did have just one question. I mentioned about how I see that playground stuff going in that corner. We don't have a big pile of dirt because again, kids like going up and down with a big pile of dirt. We could save a ton of money.
We do have mounts, but not dirt mounts.
Just thinking about it, just thinking, that would have been so much fun. I wish I had it when I was there.
All right. Warehouse bulk storage, I don't think is going to.
No, it is not. So at their warehouse, we have a bulk storage for several things that we use on a regular basis, such as the road salt, salt sand for unimproved parking lots, and then the pea stone for the year-round gravel. So since the mid 90s, we have had a basically containment system using basically just bin blocks to do it and a tarp on top. This was set up and then, at the request of, at the time, MDEQ, the Department of Environmental Quality. But at the same time, it was requested that at some point in the future, we have a more formal, more appropriate place to store our stuff. So it was included in the 2020 bond and so we went ahead and have designed that so that we have not only a better containment system with a better roof. It's not contained, it's not, we do have it so that there is a roof to keep it from the elements, but it allows air to come in and circulate. But the other thing is also to add lights so that the staff can load and unload as necessary, even at dark, because obviously, when we're doing the salt, that's usually at night. So we're just bringing this as an information item. We have the bid out and we will bring back more specifics once we get the bid in because we did do a variety of bids because the cost really, depending on what kind of material we're using, does differ. So, but this is something that will definitely help the runoff that we currently have in the area.
Colleagues, questions regarding warehouse bulk storage? Exciting stuff. Anything that's going to help our wonderful facilities folks do that hard work, especially in the winter?
Yeah, it is, it is a bit of a safety issue. Our staff has been awesome about doing that, but trying to get those tarps on and off in the middle of the night, if you're in the middle of a snowstorm or stuff, it is not very much fun. We've luckily not had any injuries, but it is always a concern and we always try to make sure they're very careful. So this would certainly take one thing off of their plate.
Anything else? Just to mention really quick that these last couple of items, our Stepansky Playground, Warehouse Bulk Storage shed are all courtesy of our community's support for our 2025. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, let's welcome up Mrs. Vile for our NAE wage adjustment.
Thank you, board members. You should see before you a PowerPoint presentation, a copy of what we'll go through tonight so that you can make notes, et cetera, as you need to. And I'll go through and make an explanation. Did you, does everyone have one?
I don't have one.
Okay, okay, yep, okay, great. So I bring forth before you this evening, the non-affiliated hourly employees for their wages for the 23-24 school year. So the non-affiliated hourly employees provide support to students and staff in a variety of disciplines, from computer services to childcare to paraprofessionals and more. It is a collection of employees that are not affiliated or under a bargaining unit such as Mespa 123 or WEA. And this group is comprised of 363 employees. I've, I've put the categories for the wages into three different buckets to help us understand today. Because it is such a diverse group, put it into three different buckets so we can discuss it. Group one are the positions without a step scale. Step scale, step one, step two, step three, right? Some just have a flat rate. Then group two will be positions that do have a step scale. And the third group I'm pulling out entirely different are this, our special education I noted here an effective date for the proposed wage scale is July 24th. However, I, based on what we need to do, I would like to amend that to August 7th. So after we meet again the next time and after you have time to review it, then this can be voted on at the next meeting and it would go into effect then on August 7th. Okay, if you can make that note. So group one positions, group one employees positions without a step. So what we have done is we have applied the 2.26 percentage increase over 23 positions. And this is, comprises 66 employees. So in doing that, the 2.26, the total cost was, is 7,214. Of that, we will have funds of $37,067 in grants, special education 9,063, self-supported programs. This is funding that comes through the senior center, 3,950, with a total hitting the general fund at 20,134. The next group of employees, these are those employees that have steps, steps one, two, three, four, et cetera. These are even broken out into two parcels here. The first section that I'll read, all employees will increase one step. So if they're on step two, they'll move to step three, as an example. Employees who are at the top step right now or in the 2020, 22-23 school year, those employees will receive an off-schedule stipend in 23-24. Since they don't have another step to go to, we will give them additional monies at the top. This is very common that we do this, right? And for even affiliated groups. Secondly, we have another group of paraprofessionals here. We denote them as classroom paraprofessionals, paraprofessionals, different than say, special ed paraprofessionals. These are the 31A paras, our English Language Development paras, junior kindergarten, math and reading lamp paraprofessionals. And for this group of employees, we have corrected their step based on their years of service in the position that they've served in, if necessary. We have some that are already at their correct step, particularly if they've been hired in the last few years. But we do have several employees from years ago that steps were frozen and they did not receive a step. And so just as we did with WEA and just as we did with our secretaries, we are correcting their step for their years of service for us here in Waterford. This is 19 of these employees we have. In addition, I am, we, the team is recommending a wage scale increase to help us attract and retain more employees in this classroom support group. So for this, the total amount of the cost is 157,948. We have $41,228 in grants to cover this, as well as our self-supported programs, which would be childcare and our tuition-based preschool in this group, to a total of 30,227, leaving 86,493 that would be applied to the general fund. Any questions at this point? Yes?
Okay, so the first one was for the 179 employees at the top of their scale. So is that off-schedule step increase? Is that just a one-time deal or is that?
We, as we will, we will follow the same model that we do with our Mespa groups. And that is if they, we hope that we will retain them through December and we pay them half of the stipend in December, right before the winter break. And then the second portion of it, we pay in June, right before they leave.
Okay, so that's a, so they're getting a stipend?
They will, yes. They will get a stipend if they're already at the top step.
And then the other group, the 19 positions, we're going to correct their step?
We're correcting their step and we are also increasing the wage scale. These are the classroom paras.
Okay, and then what is the increase on the wage scale? Do we know that?
Yes, and that is in, you should have this also. It is a list of all of the wages that was given to you. And let me find one. I'll find the exact page for you. That is on page three in the middle. So it says paraprofessional 31A, ELD, JK, math and reading.
Oh. Okay.
Okay, so that's on the, in the middle of page three.
Okay, thank you.
Joan's not here and I'd have to be treasurer, so the funding, again, it's costing $158,000 more. We have some funding, but it's basically $86,000 are going to be coming out of our general fund.
Correct.
Do we have the money reoccurring? Do we have a way of paying for this? This isn't our fund balance, not one-time money. This is a recurring, reoccurring money that are coming in that we can pay out?
Yes, that's correct. The budget that was proposed for 23-24 had 751,000 in it that was not yet assigned, right? And for the money that we're proposing for these paraprofessionals, or this whole entire group for the non-affiliates, will come from that 751,000 that we have above and beyond. That is recurring money that has not been yet.
We have money for it.
We do have money, yes.
And I'm trying to say, thank you, okay.
Okay. So I'll go on to our last group, group three. These are our special education paraprofessionals. These employees are in what we call our specialized classrooms. So these are cognitively impaired classrooms, our autistic, autistic impaired, our emotionally impaired classrooms, which we have throughout the district, correct? These employees, a couple of things happened here. We corrected their step for years of service in the position, if necessary. Employees on the steps, one through four, there is up to five. So if you look in the middle of page two on this, the wages, no, near the bottom of page two, you'll see special education paraprofessional wage scale, the bottom of page two. So this is, if they have the ability to step between, you know, there's five steps there, right? If they're between one and four, then they will move up a step. So paraprofessional currently sitting on step three will go to step four next year. We aggressively increased the wage scale, again, to attract and retain employees in this very critical role that they play. this very critical role that they play in our district. We did benchmarking throughout the district, throughout our area here in Oakland County. And I am proposing, we, the team, are proposing that this is the wage scale that we start with. Okay? Currently, we have 99 employees in this special education paraprofessional role. The total amount for all of these corrections, to increase, to correct their steps, to move them up a step if applicable, and to put them on a new wage scale, the total amount is $472,084. We have special education funding directly for that of $132,184, with a net to the general fund of $339,900. The last page I have here for you is a summary, so you can see it all together. Group, and I've, we've placed it into the buckets, the general fund, grants, or self-supported programs, right? So we'll stick right to the general fund because that's what we're really concerned about here right now. The group one paras, that's the $20,134, that was from a few pages back. Step, group two, $86,493 to increase their wages. And the last for the paraprofessionals in special education, $339,900, for a total of $446,527. So that is the total. And like I said, we have $751,000 right now, based on the proposal that Ms. Salca and Ms. Dagenhart already put forth for us last month.
I just want to say thank you so much for putting in the work to see these increases through. And obviously, as we're talking about it, you know, we've made the commitment that, you know, we want to increase salaries here and retain our staff. And this is a wonderful first step, so I'm really happy to see this. So thank you for your work on this.
Absolutely. A total team. It was a total, it's a total team effort.
Patricia? These are non-affiliated. They don't have representation per se.
Correct.
But we're taking care of them because they're our people.
They are our people.
Because that's what we do with our people. We take care of them.
That's exactly right.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
These were the positions that were, we used to call the blue book.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, okay, so part of that, that non-affiliated. Yeah, and I appreciate the work that we did on this, and you all did on, I mean, I wish it could be more, but it definitely is a start, and it's in the right direction. So, you know, thank you for the work. I think we're taking a step in the right direction on this.
Absolutely.
Just to put a fine point on it, this is attracting and retaining staff is in our strategic plan. We just had a conversation about this, Superintendent Lindberg. And just a few short weeks later, we're here with this wonderful presentation. So I just want to commend the team again, that you and the rest of my colleagues have just the nimble approach to this. And listen, our paraprofessionals are just awesome, 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 from top to bottom. They are professionals, and they keep a lot of ours, especially during COVID and coming out of COVID, many of them were the motors of our schools and provided just great care and attention to our students across the district and across our buildings. So really excited to see them.
Yeah, thank you. We are diligently working also, the team collectively, all of us are diligently working on our teacher's scale as well. And we will be in further discussions about that as well. Thank you.
All right. That takes us to the end of our information items tonight, colleagues. We are now going to move on to our new business. Let's get organized. Okay, and we're going to turn it over to Acting Secretary Donahue.
Superintendent's recommendation 01-23-24, designate areas newspaper to publish official board notices. It is recommended that the Board of Education designate the Oakland Press for publication of legal notices for the 23-24 school year. I so move.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Colleagues, comments or questions regarding the area designate, or excuse me, our publication of official board notices?
Your press is still continuing, or is it just not? I believe they still print. It's still printing, okay.
Iran, somebody had asked me about this, and they said, well, who reads the Oakland Press? I'm like, I do. I read it every day. And it's digital, and they have it where the digital, you might like this because it's scanned, it's basically the newspaper. It's like a digital form, and it's exactly what you would pick up at the newspaper stand.
Well, you can pull it up, so you can see it better.
Yeah.
You're presuming. Yeah. You think I'm reading.
But I think this is the status quo, because when I look in there, I see all the other school districts. They post their notices, you see it.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries for zero. Acting Secretary Donahue.
Superintendent's recommendation 02-23-24, appointment of legal counsel. It is recommended that the Board of Education hereby recognize and appoint the following firm, law firms, as the 2023-2024 approved legal counsel for the Waterford School District to be utilized as determined by the superintendent of schools or designee. Miller Johnson, Thrun Law Firm, Clark Hill, and Richard E. Krupnick, PLC. I so move.
Support. Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Any comments or questions, colleagues?
Good question. For these four law firms, do we rotate them, or do we use specific law firms for specific issues?
We use them for specific issues, depending on what it might be, special ed, property, personnel.
Okay, so they're specialized?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions, colleagues? Okay, very good. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries for zero. Acting Secretary Donahue.
Superintendent's recommendation 03-23-24, resolution, appointment of superintendent or designee to represent the Board of Education in all elections. It is recommended that the Board of Education appoint Scott A. Lindberg, superintendent of schools, or his designee Sandra Elka, assistant superintendent, business and operations, to represent the Board in all elections. I so move.
Support. Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Comments or questions, colleagues?
A long time ago, they made the school board secretary for media. They were the ones that were kind of in charge of certain aspects of it. Remember, taking a day off in order to do that. It only lasted like one year, but it was stupid.
Technically, the secretary of the board is responsible for elections, which is telling you, you dedicate responsibilities to staff, to standing, to do those.
People that work here that know what's day-to-day operations. Makes sense.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries for zero. We're going to stick with Acting Secretary Donahue.
Superintendent's recommendation 04-23-24, authorization to represent Waterford School District in property matters. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize Sandra Elka, assistant superintendent, business and operations, to represent the Waterford School District Board of Education in all property matters for the 2023-2024 school year, enabling her to sign board-approved purchase, sale, and lease agreements on the Board's behalf. I so move.
Support. Thank you. Motion has been moved and supported. Comments or questions? Those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries for zero. Acting Secretary Donahue.
Superintendent's recommendation 05-23-24, school district legal reference note. This note is added or attached to the minutes of the July 2022 regular meeting of the Board of Education as a legal reference status to our school district. One, legal name of school district, the Board of Education, Oakland County, DBA, Waterford School District. Two, this district is a general power school district by operation of law. Three, the Board of Education is comprised of seven members who are elected for terms of six years. Members holding office on July 1st, 2023, and the expiration of their current terms are listed below. Pat Donahue, term expires 2028. Julie Jocelyn, term expires 2024. Robert Petrusia Jr., term expires 2028. Mike Riddish, Ph.D., term expires 2026. Joan Sutherland, term expires 2024. John Paul Torres, term expires 2028. Kristin Wagner, term expires 2026. Four, members of the Board of Education are elected in the November election of even years. I so move.
Support. Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Comments or questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries for zero. Member Donahue can take a break. Turn it over now to Acting Treasurer Petrusia on our district memberships, please.
Superintendent's recommendation 06-23-24, renewal of memberships. It is recommended the Board of Education authorize the administration to renew Waterford School District memberships for the 2023-2024 school year to the following organizations: Metropolitan Detroit Bureau of School Studies Incorporated, Michigan Association of School Boards, Michigan Association of School Boards Legal Trust Fund, Michigan High School Athletic Association, Middle Cities Educational Management, Michigan Association of School Administrators, Waterford Area Chamber of Commerce. I so move.
Support. Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Colleagues, comments or questions regarding district memberships? Member Taurus?
I know over the years, we used to have like a really long list of memberships before, and then over the years, we've taken some off. Did we take any off since last year, or are these the same? We did?
The Michigan School Investment Association, across September.
Okay, so we took them off. And then, and I feel like I know what we use all the others for. Just the one, though, that I'm not as familiar with is the Metropolitan Detroit Bureau of School Studies. What's that?
Yeah, they are very supportive of superintendents, but also with resource issues and training and updates. So it's a good supportive group.
All right, thank you.
And we did expand our membership in the Waterford Area Chamber of Commerce, correct?
Yes.
It's not our group membership, not just.
Right. That is correct.
Other comments or questions regarding renewal of memberships?
We've talked about, what we've been talking about before, they've already, we cut them, I can't remember. We'll discuss that over, for other funding, but I don't have time to talk about it. Never mind, I won't get with this.
All right. All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries for zero. Acting Treasurer Petrusian, our designation of depositories.
Superintendent's recommendation 07-23-24. It is recommended that the Board approve the following resolution designating legal depositories of district monies for the 2023-2024 school year. Be it resolved that the following list of financial institutions are designated as legal depositories of the monies belonging to the Waterford School District. America Bank, Chase Bank, Fifth Third Bank, Huntington National Bank, Birmingham Bloomfield Credit Union, Metro North Federal Credit Union, PNC Bank, Waterford Bank, and a formerly Clarkson State Bank. These financial institutions are hereby authorized to accept for its credit and/or collection any and all checks, drafts, and other negotiable instruments when endorsed in its name by rubber stamp or otherwise. And be it further resolved that America Bank, Chase Bank, Waterford Bank, and a Fifth Third Bank, Huntington National Bank, PNC Bank, and Metro North Federal Credit Union be authorized depositories of internal school funds of the district. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education Treasurer is hereby authorized to sign for certification, declaration of signatures and/or names of authorized signers and authorized agents for all accounts opened under such captions as may be necessary or desirable. And be it further resolved that any and all funds credited to such accounts with the depositories may be paid out of, was drawn upon, checks drawn against respective accounts when signed by the superintendent, Scott A. Lindberg. In the absence of the superintendent, the lines of authority in decision-making and signing will be followed, and the superintendent informed. Assistant Superintendent for Business and Operations, Assistant Superintendent Teaching and Learning Services. I so move.
Support. Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Any comments or questions regarding the designation of depositories of district money?
Is there any bank that we don't use? It looks like we named anyone everyone that I've ever driven by. Why do we have so many? You could have read a lot less.
There are actually a lot more that we could, but mostly because FDIC limits.
Okay. And these are all local ones, pretty much. I mean, it's just.
Yeah, and the other thing, too, is, you know, geographic location. So when we're looking at student activity accounts.
Do we have to approve banks that we are dealing with then? I mean, that's, what is all this about? Just you agreeing to do business with them?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments or questions, Member Taurus?
Just a quick question. So do we have a limitation on the amount of banks we can use? Okay.
No.
We don't?
Nope.
I don't see the Genesis Credit Union on here in Waterford, so I was just wondering. These all seem to be in the area, so, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries for zero. And we are still with Acting Treasurer Petrusia.
Superintendent's recommendation 08-23-24. Whereas the Waterford School District currently receives 100% of the school taxes during the summer from the charter townships of Waterford, Independence, White Lake, West Bloomfield, and the city of Lake Angeles. And whereas the school district operates on a fiscal year basis from July 1st through June 30th. And whereas 1982 Public Act Number 333 sets forth certain procedures whereby a school district may avail itself of summer tax collections. And whereas on December 19th, 1996, the Board adopted a resolution to institute a 100% summer property tax levy for the entire Waterford School District to remain in effect until revoked by the Board. Now therefore be it resolved that a summer property tax levy of 100% of the school property taxes be adopted for Waterford School District for the year of 2023-2024 school year. Be it further resolved that the President of the Board, prior to January 1st, 2024, forward a copy of this resolution to the charter townships of Waterford, Independence, White Lake, West Bloomfield, and the city of Lake Angeles, and request that they continue collecting the summer property tax levy. Be it further resolved that the superintendent is empowered to initiate any alternate means necessary to secure summer tax collection for the school district as set forth in 1982 Public Act Number 333. I so move.
Support. Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Comments or questions regarding summer tax collection?
If it sounds serious, the superintendent is empowered to initiate any means necessary to collect the tax, like, we're getting our money. Okay.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries for zero. Acting Treasurer Petrusia, school meal prices, 23-24, please.
Superintendent's recommendation 09-23-24, meal prices for the 23-24 school year. Administration recommends that the Board of Education establish the following school meal prices for the 2023-2024 school year. It is recommended to approve an increase of 25 cents per meal for breakfast and lunch. The recommended increase by MDE is 56 cents. However, districts with a food service fund balance can offset part of the meal increase. Prices for student meals have not changed since before the 2016-17 school year. The new prices for breakfast for the elementary are $2, secondary are $2. The new prices for breakfast for the elementary are $2, secondary are $2, adults are $2.75. Lunch at the elementary is $3. At the secondary, it's $3.25, and adult is $4.50. I so move.
Support. Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Comments, questions regarding school meal prices? Member Torres?
I thought, do we still do free breakfast for the elementary kids? Okay. So they still get the free breakfast? All right. And that's regardless of finances or income?
Yes.
And I think that was just committed to state law and our budget as well.
We will be talking about that, very soon about that, but we've always had universal breakfast, or at least we've had it for many years.
Yeah, that's a good program.
I thought that I'd just heard that, too, that it's free breakfast and lunch.
Yes, it will include lunch as well, but there is a few strings attached, so we will bring that forward.
And if someone wanted two lunches, this is the price would be.
It would be the second lunch price.
So we have to do this for a reason.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions?
I just want to just punctuate here a little bit. The increase is 25 cents per meal, and the recommendation was over 50 cents, 56 cents, and that our wonderful Food Services Department has been able to keep that cost consistent since 2016. I think it's pretty remarkable work, so just to punctuate that.
I just come across something. It was recommended 56 cents, but we're only going up a quarter. The state's going to be reimbursing us for this free money. We can't bump it up 50 cents and collect that extra?
No.
Are we in an open meeting?
The reimbursement rate for that set by the Fed is unrelated to this.
Okay, so we can't just say, hey, this is how much you, okay. Never mind.
Other comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Youth School Meal Prices, Resolution passes four to zero. Okay, we are at our new business item, uh...
We're going to take that one off.
Yep, number two. We are at... Oh, yep. Okay, I'm moving ahead. Let's get the ten around and nobody can come up to... Okay. So let's move back now to Acting Secretary Donahue for our Contract for Select Non-Affiliated Employee Administrators.
Superintendent's Recommendation 10-23-24, Contract for Select NAE, Non-Affiliated Administrators. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the 2023-2024 Contract for Select NAE Administrators as presented. I so move.
Support. Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions? I think we turned it over to Superintendent Lindberg. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Congratulations. Motion carries four to zero. Superintendent Lindberg?
Thank you, President Rissich. I am pleased to welcome to the podium Mr. Stephen Dunk, and he is our new principal at Houghton Elementary, and he did very well going through multiple rounds of interviews, and his resume or his references were just glowing for someone who makes relationships, greets kids out at the bus stop, is big on implementing new technology, curriculum, just across the board. And we're just so pleased to welcome Stephen here to Waterford and the Houghton community.
And I didn't even have to pay them that much to get those racks. We're good. As mentioned, my name is Steve Dunk. I'm absolutely thrilled to be here. Seventeen years in education, most recently as elementary principal in Sanlack County at Marla Elementary. I'm very hopeful that the Waterford School District is my last stop in my career. That is my intention. It's my intention to finish out my career here. I've met some wonderful people already. Really, really excited to get started, and beating a dead horse, couldn't be happier to be here, so thank you.
Well, welcome, Principal Dunk. We're actually jumping the gun a little bit. We're going to vote on your contract here, just one second, so that is my fault. We jumped the gun here a little bit, so we just approved the contract. So if you would, Principal Dunk, sit there for one second, and then let's vote. So, Acting Secretary Donahue?
You'd like me to read this next?
Yes, please.
Okay, just want to verify. Superintendent's Recommendation 11-23-24, Administrative Contract Changes on Appointments. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following administrative appointment for the 2324 school year. Yvonne Dixon, Director, 912 Instruction, 100% Administrator Contract, effective July 24th, 2023. Stephen Dunk, Principal, Houghton Elementary School, 100% Administrator Contract, effective July 31st, 2023. I so move.
Support. Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported.
No, he seems a little aggressive. I'm not... I've got some family that went to Grant, and they weren't...
All those in favor, please signify.
Yeah, I had a chance to look at both resumes, you know, very qualified. And Mr. Dunk, so, you know, impressive credentials and information that I saw. I know the principal that is leaving, retiring, so big shoes to fill. She has a huge following on Facebook and social media. She posts a lot of stuff, so I think people are kind of accustomed to that over there. And I just moved from one side of Waterford to the other, but Houghton now is my neighborhood school, so all the kids in my neighborhood go there, so.
Fantastic.
But, no, great to have you. And then Ms. Dixon, I was looking at your resume, and it was funny because you actually, my wife and I went to Rochester Highs at the same time you were doing your teaching career there. So I said, I didn't even realize that, so. Well, that makes me sound...
What are you doing?
Yeah. It wasn't that long ago, but, no, it was good to see your credentials and your background very qualified. Thank you.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries four to zero. Welcome now. Now it's official. We're just so excited up here.
I would like to introduce Yvonne. Now, we certainly know Yvonne, she's been here a number of years, but I want to talk about, just again, the exceptional work that she's done here for many years. Twenty-three years?
Yes.
Yes, and principal for the last 18 at Pierce.
Yes.
But as we transition to the Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment for 912. She's very aware of the work we've been doing, the investments that we've made, and she is very passionate about continuing the great work in all of our success here, especially for our students, so we welcome Yvonne here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
How long have you been Principal at Pierce?
Eighteen years I've served the Pierce community. I know, can you believe that? I know. It's 23 years I've served the Waterford community. My first five years at my high school, the last 18 years serving the Pierce families. I have loved every moment of it. There's a phenomenal staff at Pierce, the children are phenomenal, and of course, our families are so supportive of the school and everything that we're doing to support them. Of course, I consider it an honor to be here before you and to be entrusted with the great responsibility of helping to move all of our students and our staff to higher levels of performance in our pursuit of excellence. I...
I'm sorry, just if it may be, try to make it...
(laughter) So I'd like to thank the Central Office Administration and our Superintendent for believing in me and providing the opportunity for me to continue to exercise that same fervor, that same diligence that I've displayed in the past in my pursuit of excellence, because I truly believe in the best for every child that comes across the threshold in every single one of our schools, so I won't disappoint. Thank you.
Again, I've talked to you over the years, you know, how can we do this better? And you tell me and explain it all, but it was, yeah, wow, that really sounds good. Now you're going to be able to do something. You're in the big room.
Well...
With all the big...
I'm looking forward to the challenge.
I'm excited.
Thank you. So am I.
I'll just, I'll say, I think we're just so excited to have Principal Dunk join the team, and Ms. Dixon, Principal Dixon, because we've had this, as Joan would say, our laser focus on teaching and learning, and we're just so excited to have you sort of take over this great work that's been done, or was done by Ms. Cooper and the CIA. I don't think we've got a better candidate to come in.
Absolutely. And thanks to the generosity of the school board for providing the funding to allow us to move forward with that very important work. We're very grateful for that.
Well, congratulations to both of you. Thank you for doing the team, Waterford. And as I tell all of our principals, don't be a stranger. We love to hear from our principals. Show up to a board meeting, let us know how you're doing, because we've just, we've done such great work over these last couple of years, we just want to keep that momentum going, so don't be a stranger. We always appreciate it. All right. Excellent, exciting stuff. All right. Oh. Checking to make sure we have our agenda correct here. All right, so now we're onto our non-affiliated wage adjustments here. So colleagues, I'm going to move to postpone this motion to our next, should we postpone this indefinitely, or should we postpone this to our next?
We'd really like to postpone that.
Our next, okay. So our first meeting on August 3rd. So colleagues, I'm going to move to postpone this resolution until our next scheduled meeting on August 3rd. Support. Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Colleagues, comments or questions? And I should have said, I'm making this motion because we wouldn't have, due to one of our members, a potential conflict of interest and having to abstain from the vote, we wouldn't have a quorum to pass this vote, just to be clear. So make a motion to postpone till our next meeting. Comments, questions?
We want to vote on it now, but we do.
Yes, we're eager to vote on this. We want to. All right. All those in favor of postponing the non-affiliated wage adjustments to our next scheduled meeting on August 3rd, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries four to zero, and thank you, colleagues, for your patience with me, they tried to get that right. Okay. Acting Treasurer Petrusia, Dreamsbox Learning.
Superintendent's Recommendation 132324. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the replacement of our online K8 Math Learning Platform from Success Maker to Dreambox Learning. Dreambox Learning will be piloted this summer during our K5 Camp WSD and 68 Middle School Summer Academy. Dreambox Learning provides individualized differentiated instruction. It is aligned with our Envision Math Program K8 and has been recognized by ESSA as the highest tier of strong. I so move. Oh, well, Dreambox Learning, a three-year contract, the total cost is $290,930. Funding year one and year two are ESRS, year three is 31A, so I so move.
Support. Thank you. Motion has been moved and supported. Colleagues, comments or questions regarding the purchase of Dreambox?
Member Petrusia? I read that the year one and two is ESR of year three, so this isn't coming out of our general fund? This is coming out, I don't want to say free money, because it's all money, you can spend somewhere else, but it's, it's, it's one-time pay money, so it doesn't have to...
Okay. All good. Thank you. Member Donahue?
I've already heard wonderful things from some of our staff here this evening in regards that are using Dreambox, and how well it's going, and the update, the technological updates from past years, and so it's wonderful to hear how well they're doing with it.
Member Torres?
Can we still use Success Maker right now through the end of this, because a lot of the kids brought their laptops home and they have Success Maker on it? Can we still use that during the summer months?
The short answer is yes, but we did send out Dreambox links to everybody.
I, yeah.
And we've actually seen, surprised, not, well, maybe not so surprisingly, but several of our buildings, as I'm following the data, there are at least almost a classroom of students in each one of our elementary buildings that aren't signed up for Summer Academy that have been using it regularly, so.
You sent us the link, so I got the link that you sent us, and I got on there and, you know, played with it and stuff. So can the, so the kids, can they also go ahead and start using Dreambox, or is that...
Yes. Yeah. The links that we sent you were just kind of a playground, it was a flavor, but when kids are logged in, it actually will start tracking their progress and really individualizing their instruction.
So if there's kids in Waterford School District that, you know, that we hear of that want to get started, they can just on a normal computer or even on their laptops that they have? And that link was, was that sent out to the families, or is that...
Yep, we sent that out to families as part of our summer learning packet.
Okay, so I'll tell them to check their learning packet email.
Yeah.
And it's a web-based application, so all you have to do is go to Dreambox and sign that you're using your school credentials.
So when you go to the summer learning packet, there's a link. You have to go to that link, because we roster through a different system that links into Dreambox. But when the students log in, they log in using their Google login, so that same login that they're familiar using everywhere else, you just have to make sure they're on that specific site.
And just, and just for those following along at home, part of what makes this Dreambox program really exciting, especially when compared to Success Maker, is the data that it gives to teachers to help guide instructions. Not only is it responsive to where students had at that particular moment, but it's really given our...
To teachers and students. Students are able to really track their progress along the way, which is a kind of a missing piece as well.
Colleagues, other comments or questions regarding Dreambox? All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Member Donahue, Member Petrusia, for a lot of reading here. All right, so colleagues, we're now going to move on to public comments on non-action items. These are things that we did not vote on, so I've got a stack of green cards here. So before we welcome up our community members here, I'm going to remind everyone that comments are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public are invited to share comments. However, this is not intended to be a time for questions and answers. Lastly, participants may speak only once on the same topic, and of course, are pleased asked to avoid statements that are personally directed, abusive, or obscene. So I'm going to welcome up Ms. Karen Crouppa. Ms. Crouppa? The dubious honor of going first.
I live on Pleasant Drive in Huntoun Village subdivision. I know you've heard my story. I know it's always safety that nobody seems to want to address. We finally had one of your board come and see how bad the traffic is in our area and that we do need some safety. How about getting up a task force to agree with some rules and regulations for that gate being left open? It's open right now. People cut through there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and they don't drive the speed limit. Neither do most of the buses, and the parents, and some of the students when they're in school. I'm not saying all the parents. People seem to be more involved with their telephones instead of watching where the residents are walking. When we have sidewalks, we use them, but our neighborhood does not have sidewalks all over, and we didn't cause the problem. Nobody asked us if it was okay, or nobody gave us any safety measures whatsoever for our neighborhood and its residents. Our children can't play outside. We have a hard time walking animals through our neighborhood because we get run off the road by all the excessive speeding traffic. We don't have any compliance with the police department because they don't have any cars to send to us. We call and they tell us they have nobody available. Something needs to be done. If somebody would like to sit there and actually see what we go through on a regular basis other than Mr. Torres, who took the time to do that, that would be wonderful. Then you see what happened to our neighborhood because of this gate being open all the time. Thank you.
Ms. Crouppa? Let's now welcome up Ms. Sheila Bowman to this podium, please.
Hi.
Welcome.
I live directly on Van Zant Road, and the reason I'm here tonight is I totally echo I, Krupa?
Karen.
Karen. I totally echo what she's saying. I've lived there since nineteen sixty-eight. I know that you probably don't believe that, because I look a lot younger than that. But anyways, I seriously have. My, I was raised on Van Zant. I was there before it was even paved once. It was never paved twice. It was paved once in its lifetime. And my main concern is, I was a graduate of Waterford Kettering, obviously, so, but my main concern is what's going on right now with these gravel trailers. I mean, I know my concern is the same that Karen, I echo everything she says. But also, these gravel trailers, they're destroying our road. It's not just the first time, okay? It's, this is numerous times. This, but the other time was when, that I can recall recent, most recent was when they put in the new football field at Kettering High School, which is amazing and wonderful. I mean, I hear the games. I live right there on Van Zant Street, Road. So, but long story short, something has to be done. I mean, in the budget, as far as with these new projects that are going to be amazing, I'm not saying anything against the parking lot at Kettering. But why is that gate open? Why is there a sign that says, "No trucks"? Why? Why do we have that there? I just took, went down the road and took pictures. What's the purpose if we don't go by the rules? Who are the rules for? I mean, the road is being destroyed by these travel trailer, truck things, whatever they are, going down the road. I mean, I have a migraine headache by the end of the day. I'm not kidding you, it's bad. So I called the truck company and I asked, what could they do? Could they come into the other way? Where the road was never open my whole entire life, like I said, nineteen sixty-eight. So I don't know how long I had to talk, but I'm just frustrated, because it's not been open, then it's open. Why is it open tonight? School's not open. School's not open in the summertime. I understand they're redoing this, but it's something has to, has to give. The road is being destroyed. Are they going to replace the road once they're done with replacing the school parking lot?
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Let's welcome Sam James up, please.
Thank you. So I live on Caterham Drive, not near Van Zant, but I do understand what they're going through. I've been coming to meetings for a while now. I do know what it feels like to be ignored. My first meeting that I came to was back in April about an issue that I had at one of our schools. Still have yet to get any follow-up on that, and the school year's over. So we talk about these bond dollars that the community makes possible by voting on things and stuff for our schools. It's also job of the district to support the community. You know, they may not have kids in school now, but they also are, are the people that will be at the polls when we need them to be at the polls. So it's time for the board, and I'm being very transparent, to step up and solve this issue. They've been talking about it at every meeting. It's as simple as that. So I appreciate you guys taking the time and listening, but it's now time for action. Thank you.
Mr. James? Welcome up, please, Mr. Russ Gerke.
Yes, my name is Russ Gerke. I live on the corner of Van Zant and Don's Drive. I've been here since two thousand fourteen. I've been a, tried to be a community active person in the community and what have you. My complaint is still the excess traffic that is coming down from the school and this road construction truck. I've been rolled off the couch. On my shoulder that has been broken and fixed once. And now I got something wrong with my knee when I came off the couch, so I gotta go get that looked at. But that, that's regarded. Something needs to be done about all the excessive traffic that is coming through, because people know that they can get through there now. And they're not conscious of the speed limit, which is dangerous, very dangerous, for all of us down there. And I am really totally way up here. I am red flagged by the police department, because I've called so much and complained. They think I'm just an old man complaining about something, all right? I'm all with safety also, with everybody in the community, and I'm gonna stay, I'm not going away. I'm gonna try to see and, and try to get something done here that's comparable to, to the rest of us residents, to make a, you know, get a resolution done on this. So I hope that you're hearing us right now, and we can get something handled, at least communicate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gerke. Okay, let's welcome up Ms. Robin McGregor.
Hello. Mr. Patricia stated that the school district takes care of their people. And I thank you for saying that, because your people are also us. We are the community. In two thousand, or I'm sorry, in nineteen seventy-one, Van Zant was locked and not used until two thousand eighteen, just before the start, end of the, or the start of the year. For all that time, we had, when my kids went to school there, in two thousand four, my daughter's gradu, or my, y'all the oldest graduated, we had sixteen hundred students going through Kettering. This year, we have eight hundred at Kettering. In two thousand eight, when my other daughter graduated, we had seventeen hundred. They all used Hatchery. Yes, we had backups. As parents, I knew I had to get up a few minutes early to make sure my kids got to school, if I was taking them or not. It was my responsibility to make sure the buses got there on time. We had hardly any issues, because I was in that school at least three to four days a week between two thousand to two thousand eight. This is a small problem when you look at the grand scheme of what our district has. The sign states, and I have petitions, that we're going to not present tonight, but the sign outside of that gate says, "Drive closed during non-school hours." The people aren't asking for much. They're asking that during the non-school hours, that it's closed. They've never said during the school hours to close it. My issue in all of this is, like the one person said, the liability on their road. When I sat on this board, Kingsley Montgomery was a big piece, because Shoreline had to have their road done. For the first time at our sad meeting at our township, they are now getting their road done. But it's costing them twenty thousand dollars a person or more, and the school district isn't paying a dime for it. They only have residents on one side. They don't have them on the other. They back up. There's straight houses, and then they back up the streets that are going this way. So in essence, the road commission told me it would be thirty thousand dollars per person to repave their roads. The average person in Waterford doesn't do that. If they have to pay for an assessment for a road, that means that they're not going to think about the bond issue for our kids. The most important thing in our community to me, and I can only speak for myself, is the children of our future. So can we take this small little issue that's been going on with these people for six years, abide by the sign that's out there that says that it would be closed during non-school hours, and follow through? Because I have a police report on traffic, and we have over six hundred signatures. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Thank you, everyone, for the green, with the green cards. Thank you for showing up and speaking with us tonight. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board this evening on non-action items? So, thank you again. Colleagues, let's now move on to our Board of Education reports. Are there any board reports tonight? Member Donahue?
As part of the subcommittee for the Dorton Plains Nature Center, they're doing a lot of different activities there, and they're really trying to bring in our community members, our students, and at every grade level. And one of the things that they were asking for, so I don't know who would pass this on to, to them, is they're doing the Halloween hay rides, and they're already planning for that. But they need student help in getting the, the areas up and ready to go. And so they were wondering if through the student leadership class, through National Honor Society, National Junior Honor Society at the middle school level, if students would be available, that they would sign off on hours to help work on, and, and get the, the nature center and Hess Hathaway up and ready to go for those Halloween hay rides, which is the first weekend in October. And, but they're, they're doing a lot of great different activities there this summer, and the nature center itself is open on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and they're getting, they have had more people this summer come in than they've had the last couple of years combined. So it was really nice to hear that.
The board reports? Member Torres?
Just briefly want to speak to the issue on Van Zant. I have had an opportunity to go out to the location, witness the traffic that does go through there. I remember back in two thousand and eighteen, when our previous superintendent opened the gate up, you know, there was some discussion about it as a board. After I left the board for the two years, it seems like the issue with the cut-through has gotten bad. So when I came to the board, I started to hear more and more about, about this topic. Have had an opportunity to speak with President Ristich about it, also speak with superintendent about it as well, Lindberg. But I just want to attest to the fact that I have gone out there, sat there at about five-thirty, five, between about five-thirty to six o'clock on a Tuesday night, and I was surprised at how bad the traffic is there. And when you see it is people coming down Kettering Drive through the Kettering parking lot to cut through to go over to Williams Lake Road. So I think that, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, and, you know, I can attest to the fact that as a board member, you know, being out there and seeing it, it is something that I, I hope we can work with you on. So, but, you know, we appreciate you all coming out here tonight, you know. This is what public comment is for, hearing the voices. But I can attest to the fact that that traffic flow is bad, and hopefully we can have some kind of compromise to assist you all. Thank you.
Kettering Drive's been closed since June, because of the parking lot.
No.
You can't get through there.
Yes, you can.
There's big, separate.
It's open right now.
No, not at Van Zant, like Kettering Drive, coming off of Hatchery.
And that's what I thought as well.
Kettering Drive is open right now. I checked it out.
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and stop, because one thing, I'm a little bit nervous, well, I'm a little bit nervous, because if the board does want to take action, then we're deliberating right now without this being on the agenda. So I should have actually stopped Member Torres in advance.
If you want to check it, it'll be open all night.
I appreciate that. But I'm gonna remind all of us that when we get to board reports, let's please just speak to the relevant parts of board reports, which are just professional learning and our community groups, because I really don't want to be deliberating towards something that's not on the agenda. So going forward, reminder for all.
I guess we'd like to ask you to come and see what we have to deal with, or what has been the monster that our neighborhood has turned into.
Ms. Krupa, I appreciate that invitation.
We have, I have offered for the last six years for someone to come and see, but nobody comes.
Other Board of Education reports tonight?
Mr. Torres is the only one down there.
We appreciate you sharing that during public comment.
Yes, sir.
Really quick, the Waterford Mott, Waterford Kettering Alumni Game, organized by Mr. Jason Riley, whose son was just here, state champion bowler, is taking place on August fourth at Waterford Kettering. The benefits of that game, proceeds of that game will be going to Waterford, Mott, and Kettering soccer programs for new uniforms. So if you have a chance, come on out. It was a riot last year, so I know they have two games, one for the under-twenty-six crowd, and then one for the over-twenty-six crowd. But I think it's gonna be good. It's starting to get so big, we should probably get to like, you know, the over-forty crowd or something like that. But August fourth, thanks to Mr. Jason Riley, if you, there's, you go to, you can contact him, Facebook, on the GoFundMe, there's all the information to register for that, so. Thank you, colleagues. Superintendent Lindberg?
All right, thank you, President Ristich. Well, just finally, tonight, although it's summertime, there is so much happening throughout the district. We have a number of summer programs running, including high school and middle school summer academy. Students have enjoyed learning and exploring in our Summer of Steam program, and last week, the virtual camp began. I'm excited to tour Camp WSD next week, along with members of the board, to see and hear our kids in action during the summer. We serve breakfast and lunch daily at our meetup and eat-up locations in the district here. Meals are free for children eighteen and under, and we offer fun outdoor activities at Durant on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and I plan to stop by tomorrow there. It's happening at noon, and indoor activities take place on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So you can get free breakfast and lunch and activities, so check that out. Information is right on our website. There's even a bounce house each Friday. You may have seen the Sweet Reads Mobile driving through your neighborhood, serving ice cream and distributing books for summer reading. Thank you to all of the staff, our great staff and our volunteers, who made this incredible program and outreach possible. Check out the summer schedule on our website to see when the Bookmobile will be near you. These are just a few examples of how Waterford School District is keeping students, families, and the community engaged this summer. We're also working hard every day, preparation for the new school year and the return of staff and students later next month. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, colleagues, sign no further business. Tonight's meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.